Ten, twenty, twenty, roll call.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe is absent. Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Alright, so, uh, next, councilmember Nguyen going to lead us to salute to the flag and Vice Mayor Ho, we do invocation, so please stand.
Please place your hand. Please place, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, meet tonight. We ask your divine assistance in conducting our community affairs. There are a variety of issues before this council tonight. Some of the agenda officially, others simply weighing upon the minds of those in attendance. Please grant us the insight and the ability to truly see both what is right and what is the best for the city of Westminster and its citizens. Amen. Please, please sit.
Thank you, councilmember Nguyen and Vice Mayor Ho. Next, we have report from city attorney.
There's nothing to report on a closed session.
Thank you so much. Next, we have expert communication. None. Report from city clerk, please.
Yes, we received, um, late communication first for item three point two, and it's from Walter Gonzalez on behalf of, um, Expedia Group, and it basically says, thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on the city of Westminster's efforts to regulate short-term rentals. Expedia Group is a family of brands that includes vacation rental leaders. Our experience working with communities California and around the world gives us a unique understanding of the kinds of regulations that work for municipalities like Westminster. Expedia Group supports regulations and oversight of the short-term rental industry, but not an outright ban. STRs are important part of the fabric of tourism. They provide an essential option within the visitor industry for travelers, especially families, and give them an opportunity to enjoy your city in a more personal setting. An often unacknowledged casualty of banning STRs is the community of small business and local homeowners who be severely harmed. Westminster deserves a short-term rental ordinance that responsibly regulates the activity, but also recognizing the important economic benefits that they provide to the local economy and the families benefit, not to mention the revenue generated from much-needed municipal expenditures. And they've also provided a list of, um, policies that they believe work best. Um, they offer tools to assist city with compliance, and they're asking that if you have any questions to reach out to them. A copy of this will be available or is available. And, um, we also received an item, an e-comment for item seven point one, which is the Measure SS Citizens Oversight Committee. This one is from Jody Boyd that says she's reaching out regarding her application for appointment to the committee, sincerely wants to serve on this vital committee, hope you consider her application favorably tonight. Um, she's briefly involved with Westminster United, but walked away after uh, David Johnson unilaterally accepted Kiu Hong's participation, and she hasn't had anything to do with Westminster United or David Johnson since, and she's not affiliated in any way with Kiu Hong, the ballot recount, or claim filed by Kai Dao, and she thanks you for consideration. Um, in addition to that, there was a, um, proclamation that was approved um, for, um, that, for councilmember Nguyen who would like to, uh, speak about this proclamation.
Uh, thank you so much for that, and I'd like to ask councilmember Nguyen, uh, to read his proclamation that the, uh, that proclamation that he requests.
Okay, I will state the, uh, reason, uh, for proclamation, uh, for the two nineteen twenty twenty veterans of the Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Day. And then, uh, uh, after that, I'd like to have, uh, Mayor Ta to continue the, the last part of their, uh, proclamation. So, uh, veterans, proclamation veterans of the Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Day. Whereas from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen seventy-five, the Vietnam War brought about the loss of approximately tw- two hundred and fifty thousand members of the Armed Forces of the Republic of Vietnam and fifty-eight thousand members of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas more than three hundred thousand members of the United States Arm Forces and more than a million members of the Armed Forces of the Republic of Vietnam were injured. And whereas after the fall of Saigon, more than two hundred and fifty thousand members of the Armed Forces of Republic of Vietnam were sent to re-education camps. Many spent up to seventeen years in captivity, and more than twenty thousand died before they were released. And whereas thousands of veterans of Republic of Vietnam now reside, reside in their United States and participate in activities sponsored by, uh, by American veterans, including Memorial Day. And today, there are, and there is an estimate of one hundred thousand veterans from Republic of Vietnam living in California. And whereas all veterans who risked their life fighting for freedom should be honored and their distinguished service in Vietnam War and for the contribution they provided to the United States as American citizen. And whereas the city of Westminster honors the sacrifices, commitment, dedication, and courage of everyone who fought for the freedom of Republic of Vietnam and joins with the veterans of Republic, uh, of Vietnam to designate June nineteenth as a day of remembrance for Americans and Vietnamese who fought side by side for the ideals and values of democracy. Democracy.
Now, therefore, I, Tietao Mayor, the city of Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor Kimberly Ho, councilmembers Socio Contreras, Tai Do, and Chi Charlie Wei, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty, as veterans of the Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Dead. Ngai Wun Lek Vietnam Cong Hoa, in the city of Westminster, in memory of the soldier who sacrificed her life for freedom and democracy and the victims of the Vietnam War, and in honor of survivor activists and freedom uh, and freedom fighter of that war. So that is the, uh, proclamation, uh, request by councilmember Nguyen, and I really appreciate that. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I just, I just want to ask clarification on this. Since it's not on the agenda, should we walk this onto the agenda due to the, I, I guess the, the timing of this is important. In terms of getting it out now, can we have a, maybe a motion to bring this on, and then the council can vote on it to approve it?
Great. Um, so just to interject with that, our proclamation procedure is, it doesn't require council approval. So this was just one that the mayor had, um, had already approved, um, through his role as a mayor, um, just with any other proclamation. So the councilmember Nguyen just wanted to bring this up, um, that this was.
Just to read it?
Just to read it. There's no action. It's, it's already approved.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
Alright, so, uh, anything else for the special presentation before we have oral communication?
I actually have one more thing to add. We did, we did receive late communication for items seven point one and seven point two from Adam Buttons. And basically, um, he is requesting to be considered for, um, for either of the committees, for the Measure SS or the Traffic Commission.
Okay, thank you so much. So, uh, next, we have oral communication.
Yes, for oral communications, I have, oh, one speaker request, uh, from Terry Rains. Let me bring her. Hi, Terry, are you with us?
I think so.
Okay.
Am I?
Yep, whenever you're ready.
Alright, good. Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Tonight is the second reading of the Short-Term Rental Ban Ordinance. It was very disappointing that council did not continue this item to a future meeting so that staff could do additional research and provide information about all of the city's options. The discussion was all over the place at the last meeting. If you are gonna ban them, then do so with a municipal code that has teeth to it, like Garden Groves, or adopt strict, uh, restriction and enforcement laws and allow them so we can collect some badly needed revenue via the transient occupancy tax. I'd like to speak again about the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one revised budget. I forwarded my comments from the study session to council and staff for further consideration. I was disappointed that council did not seem prepared to discuss the budget in detail at the study session, especially at a time when the city's finances are being greatly impacted by COVID nineteen and the looming sunset of Major SS. Some of my recommendations include the city should make additional expenditure cuts to this budget prior to its approval. Other than a few contract cancellations, some pros and open positions, and some reduction in part-time wages, this budget has few actual cuts to spending. Even if Measure SS is renewed, we are projected to have deficits of well over four million dollars in a few years. If Measure SS is not renewed, the city will be in dire financial straits and run completely out of money. The city needs to do some serious belt tight, tightening now before we reach a financial crisis again. Number two, the city should reduce the sales transaction and property tax revenue projections in this budget, specifically, A, Major SS transaction tax revenue should be reduced by another five hundred thousand dollars to closer align with general sales tax projections. B, property tax revenue should be reduced by five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand to allow for expected residential and business foreclosures and tax-deleted properties due to COVID nineteen impacts. Mortgage defaults are projected to be as high as thirty percent in the coming year. C, sales tax revenue should be reduced by another two hundred and fifty thousand or more to be more conservative. Better to err on the side of caution than not. Number three, the city should immediately begin conducting extensive community outreach about the need to renew Measure SS and aim toward putting the measure on this year's November ballot because more people will be voting due to it being a presidential election. Four, the city should revert to an annual versus a biannual budget cycle for closer scrutiny of the city's finances. Speaking of the budget, I have shared my concern with city staff about the Citizens Oversight Committee. In my opinion, they should have met immediately after the preliminary revised budget came out to review and discuss it and formulate and present their recommendations. Council must approve the budget at the next meeting because the new fiscal year begins on July first. Waiting until that night doesn't give staff time to incorporate the changes. I also reached out on social media to Chair Diana Carey, but did not receive a response back. I do plan on attending their future meetings and offering input and feedback as warranted. Speaking of the Oversight Committee, item seven point one tonight to fill a vacancy on that committee. The vacancy is for Mayor Ta's appointment. It has been open for about four months. I considered applying for the position, but given it is Mayor Ta's appointment, and I would not get the three votes needed to be appointed, I decided against it. There are two applicants, but only one good, good choice. Jody Boyd is very qualified and would be a great addition to the committee. She frequently reviews the city's finances in great detail and wants very much to serve the city. I witnessed the other applicant's disturbing outbursts at the June second homelessness task force meeting. It was off-topic, inappropriate, and very uncomfortable to listen to. I shared my concern with staff and others on the committee, and this was not the first time that I witnessed this person speaking in a disturbing manner. Therefore, I do not think he should be on any other city commissions or committees. Finally, item seven point two is to fill a vacancy on the Traffic Commission, also Mayor Ta's appointment. These vacancies are not widely publicized by the city for some reason. As a result, many qualified eager-to-serve members of the community are overlooked. Filling this vacancy should be continued to a later meeting. The only applicant is a Vietnamese media YouTuber who has a reputation for creating unrest in the city. It is a conflict of interest to appoint a member of the media to a city commission or committee, but Mayor Ta has done it before, and he will do it again. Quid pro quo is alive and well in Westminster. Thank you.
Uh, city clerk, uh, do we have any other speaker?
Yes, uh, next speaker is Jody Boyd.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is Jody, and I think I, this is gonna be more of a question probably for, uh, the city attorney or Christine. And this is regarding the submittal of applications to serve on our commissions and committees. Does the city of Westminster have any type of a deadline or cutoff point? Um, within which applicants are required to apply so they can be, um, vetted and everything ahead of time? We seem to have a lot of walk-on appointments, so I might not be clear on the process. Thank you.
Uh, city attorney, uh, would you like to respond to that? But I think that, uh, uh, they, they have been vacant for the last, uh, few months. And I believe that, city clerk, I would like, I'd like you to confirm, you know, I think that, uh, you already, uh, put up on the website, right?
Oh, yes, so just to kind of explain our process a little bit more.
Right.
Um, so we have the vacancies, um, one of which, the Measure SS one was back in February, I believe. And then the Traffic Commission one was back in, I think it was March or March or April, don't remember. But either way, um, we have guidelines in which we have to post a notice of vacancy. We don't traditionally post a notice of vacancy like in the newspaper, but we post them in our, um, our posting locations, which would be at City Hall, um, generally the library when it is, you know, when it's, when it's open, um, and the Community Services Building. It's also posted on our website. The notices of vacancies hadn't been taken down. Um, as far as the deadline goes, we don't really have a hard deadline. So when we've put a deadline in the past, um, in the notice, it, when it has a date, it's generally because we're expecting that it would be filled by, you know, by a certain date close, you know, close after that deadline. So it's almost more like a, you know, you need to get your, your application in for, and if you want to be in this first review, um, you know, for, for that appointment. Um, these last two notices, we've just put as soon as possible, not anticipating when that would, you know, when the actual appointment would be. Um, but these vacancies have been, you know, um, these positions have been vacant for quite some time now with notices out there. Um, a- as, you know, as part of just normal policy, we actually accept applications year-round, whether there is a vacancy or not a vacancy. So at any given point, anyone can submit an application, um, you know, for, you know, for any of the committees, and it's on file with us for a year. Um, in, in which, you know, Adam Buttons, for example, had, uh, submitted one for the homeless task force, but then he asked, you know, if we can use that, um, you know, for this recruitment, because it's within the year. Um, and we, of course, take every application. We vet it with the county to make sure that the residency requirements are, um, are fulfilled. We've also asked that each candidate or, um, you know, or each, you know, applicant, uh, fill out the Code of Ethics, which was passed last year, and provide a copy of their driver's license as well as a utility bill. So, um, these are all vetted applicants. If at any given point, um, you know, the, we, we have an applicant who's turned one in, or an appointment is made at the council meeting of someone, we don't have an application on file, um, which did happen, uh, last year and last year's, you know, and, yeah, biannual recruitment. What we do is we take that person's information after the fact. The appointment is made contingent upon meeting all of these recommendations or all these requirements, rather, um, that we have. So hopefully that clarifies that, but, um, you know.
Yep, I appreciate that. Uh, so do we have any other speaker before we have?
We do, we do.
Please.
Camilla, Camilla Overby.
Okay.
Hi, are you with us?
I am. I'm sorry, I can barely speak. I've been at ten protests in like twelve days, so, um, I have zero voice. But, um, I would just first like to say, um, thank you to our chief of police. Um, I applaud you in your leadership in coming out, um, regarding the recent events with George Floyd and everything else. And furthermore, um, I wholeheartedly thank you for taking a stance against the carotid control hold, also known as chokehold. Um, community members are truly appreciative, and your leadership is very welcome. Um, second to that, originally, I was just gonna leave it at that, but I don't know if this council is aware, um, but I would ask for the date that Charlie has just given, um, regarding his proclamation. I would ask that that be changed in light of all of these events. I am not sure that this council is aware that June nineteenth is also known as Juneteenth, which is the Freedom Day, and it's the day that slave, slaves were freed. Um, and I think that in light of everything that's going on, it's quite un, like insensitive for this council to have a proclamation that somewhat denigrates everything that's going on in this community and across the world, and especially in this country. So I would ask that you change the date. Um, and I would also ask that this city council find a way to stand behind our Black community members and show solidarity with them. And with that, I thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
City clerk, any, um, any other speaker?
I have no additional speakers.
Alright, so, uh, close oral communication there. Um, next, we have consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless member of city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion. So may I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Move the poll, uh, three point two.
Alright, so, uh, uh, councilmember Nguyen, you want to revise your motion?
I move to approve, uh, uh, with the, with the, from, um, three point two from, uh, uh, councilmember Contreras.
So I, uh, second the motion, we move, uh, the slate, but item three point two, alright.
And so that was, yeah, motion made by councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta to move the consent calendar except item three point two. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried four to zero.
Alright, item three point two, second reading of ordinance number two five six six related to the ban of all short term rental of residential property for periods of thirty days or less. Councilmember Contreras?
This, um, I just wanted to, just, I want to abstain based on my last, uh, comments from the previous meeting.
Alright, so may I have the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Alright, so we have a motion and second to approve, item three point two.
So that was a motion from councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta to approve item three point two, which is adopting ordinance number two five six, entitled and ordinance the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, amending Title Nine Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare and Title Seventeen Land Use of the Westminster Municipal Code to affirmatively ban all short-term rentals of residential property for periods of thirty days or less, read by title only and waive further reading. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Contreras?
Thank you.
And councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried three zero one with councilmember Contreras abstaining.
Alright, item, uh, we have now regular basis item five point one, award of maintenance service agreement for well uh, per maintenance and repair at various location for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-one. So may I? Councilmember Contreras, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but move to approve.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay, so councilmember Nguyen, second it, okay?
And so that motion made by councilmember Contreras, seconded by councilmember Nguyen, and that's to approve the award of an annual renewable unit price maintenance service agreement to award, uh, service to General Pump Company in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand five dollars and authorize the interim city manager to execute the agreement and future renewals on behalf of the city. Uh, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
And councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have commission and committee item seven point one, appointment to the Measure SS Oversight Committee. Uh, I'd like to nominate Mister Mark Lawrence. May I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, so that was to appoint Mark Lawrence to the Measure SS Oversight Committee for the remainder of an existing term expiring upon the committee's disbandment, and that's anticipated in twenty twenty-two. Um, motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by councilmember Nguyen. Uh, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
And councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried four to zero.
Uh, seven seven, item seven point two, appointment to the Traffic Commission. I'd like to nominate Mister Nam Juan Nguyen.
I second it.
Okay, and so that was to appoint Nam Juan Nguyen. Motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by councilmember Nguyen. Okay, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carried four to zero to appoint Nam Juan Nguyen to serve on the Traffic Commission for the remainder of an existing term expiring in November twenty twenty.
Thank you. Next, we have comments and requests for agenda items from city council agency members in Lu A B one, two, three, four, report when required. So who'd like to go first? Vice Mayor Ho? Would you like to go first?
I could go first.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, at this time, I'd like to thank, um, our police chief, Mark Lawback, for such a great job, uh, that you've done this past week, uh, the, in, uh, the Westminster Police Department. Um, I'm just very pleased at how it turned out. Everybody's safe, and, and, um, that's, that's very important. Um, and, um, I would like to, uh, speak next in regards to the, uh, maybe a question for staff first, uh, whether or not I agendized it, I don't know. But, um, the question regarding the T U P, somebody could answer? That be Alexa or Sherry? Our interim city manager?
Uh, question to.
I just want. Are we, uh, I'm sorry, I saw the memo, and I believe that there was an email out, and so are you uh, accepting applications right now?
We are, it is, yeah, it's available on the website now.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, how are you getting the word out there? I mean, I mean, that's really important because we're truly trying to help as much as we can to get, uh, these folks, you know, these folks being the, uh, business owners, um, um, you know, back on their feet. So we want to get word out as soon as possible. Um, how are we doing that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we just put everything up on the website today. So we'll work with Christine and her communications team tomorrow to make sure that everything is going out on our social media. We've also been trying to augment our email list of our businesses. Not all businesses have provided us their email through the business license process. So we've actually been calling them individually, trying to, um, connect with them, you know, through digital email options. So we will e-blast that out as well, and then really just try to spread the word and have our, you know, our, our community members talk to each other and, and share the information verbally too.
I think at this time, uh, we're, it might be a good idea for us to, as, as your team were calling out to people who don't have emails, they could also update, uh, you know, the list of emails so that we could have further communications via email, and that's very cost-effective. Um, versus, you know, and, and it's quick, of course, and, uh, so I'm very concerned if, if there's anything we could do for, for that community, we should, um, if you could think of anything else. Um, I really like what is, um, being presented, you know, with this T U P. Um, I barely glance at it, but, uh, I think that, uh, I think that was, was, was it today, this morning, or?
Yeah, we finalized it and got it available today.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much. Yeah, okay, thank you so much. Um, I think that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ho, so councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor Ta. Um, I'd like to start off by reading a statement that I released earlier this week um, in regards to the George Floyd, uh, killing. Um, so it, the past few months have been a trying time for our county and our entire country as we have all been forced to navigate in unprecedented pandemic and the economic repercussions that followed. Then a couple weeks ago, we were all shocked to our core as we watched the graphic killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt condolences to the family of Mister Floyd. No one deserves, uh, what happened to him and I pray that his loved ones are granted swift justice. This incident has highlighted the need for change at the local level and the national level so we can ensure that this type of people with tragedy never happens again. But as dark as the chapter is, we cannot let this define us. We must move forward with a common purpose to turn tragedy into action. Change never comes easy and I know tough work lies ahead, but I have committed my heart and soul to this task and I look forward to working with our local officials, community leaders, law enforcement groups to chart a new path forward. Together, we will build a better country and count. So with that, again, uh, this statement I had prepared earlier and um, I, after the statement, I, I, I've received, you know, numerous emails, um, calls and um, messages regarding the incident and what we were doing here locally. I know we received a number of emails ourselves, I'm sure you, the email box was filled with, um, messages in regards to the eight can't wait campaign. So I just want to take a few minutes to address the recent emails and requests I've received from community regarding the demonstrations around the country and the eight can't wait campaign. Um, for those of you who are familiar with eight can't wait campaign, it is a request from the community members wanting to reform and changes to the use of force policy. So we are all extremely fortunate in the state of California and the city of Westminster because many of those requests for change have already been implemented within the policies and procedures of the Westminster Police Department. So I just want to give everyone a quick snapshot of what those changes are and that are being requested. You know, one was a request in regards to require de-escalation. You know, several of our department policies require the use of de-escalation to achieve successful and safe outcome for everyone involved. The second one is the ban of chokeholds, our department does not authorize the use of chokehold. However, a car door chokehold is permitted. At this time, uh, Chief Lotterback has suspended the department's use of that car door, uh, car doorway control hold and I want to acknowledge him for his leadership. Um, two, three is the ban shooting at moving vehicles. The department's policy already addresses the type of use of force, shooting at moving vehicles should only occur if there's no other reasonable options available to avert threat deadly force to officers in the community. Four, exhaust all other means before shooting. Policy and state law requires officers to use that amount of force reasonable to effect an arrest. Um, five, comprehensive reporting, in May of two thousand eighteen, the Westminster Police Department began using body worn cameras. Officers are required to record all actions during calls for service. In addition, the department provides data to the California Department of Justice regarding all officer involved shootings and uses of force resulting in bodily injury. Uh, six, duty to intervene, our department policy mandates that any officer intervenes when they witness another officer using excessive force. Number seven, require warnings before shooting, our policy states that when feasible, officers should give a verbal warning for using deadly force. And then number eight, require use of force continuum, police department's policy only requires officers to use that amount of force that really appears necessary given the fact and the totality of the circumstances. So I'll let, uh, the chief, you know, dig deeper a little more if he feels he needs to, but as you can see, you know, from the work, we spent um, numbers, numerous conversations back and forth, you know, having to make sure we address the community's concerns. You know, I, I, I see so far that our department's aggressive stance on limiting use of force and requiring officers to intervene, you know, the officers and using excessive force, we have had a great reputation and track record for treating our community with dignity and respect. You know, one of the things that I've always, um, uh, appreciated since, uh, joining the council and serving on the councils, our work that we do in the community in regards to community policing, I think we do an extensive work there. I mean, this council has worked hard to even create incentives to hire and diversify our police department. Um, we've, uh, hired officers to specifically deal with certain issues like homelessness, mental health. Um, uh, we even, I think we even recently, uh, hired a, or had an officer directed specifically for our schools. We do a lot of work and to make, to be outreach, there's numerous events and activities. We have, um, you know, our, our safety day events and our visits from Paco all over the, the city. Um, you know, we have a citizens academy, we've had a police chief advisory committee, we have a great explorer program that I think always has a waiting list. So I think our city's done a lot more and the chief could speak more to that specifically, but I know the chief has taken a firm stance on holding officers accountable for their actions as well as working with our community to improve the methods in which we provide quality service to those within our Westminster. So, you know, um, with that, I just really want to turn to the chief and just kind of ask him to talk about some of the programs that we're maybe expand on something I spoke on or maybe a little bit on the programs that we use with, we touch their community. I know we're always making, looking, looking for ways to, to improve our community and we can always do better. And I know that we're striving for that, so I want to continue moving us forward and having that conversation with our department to continue working on our diverse community to, by operating within the guidelines, the policy and state law as it pertains to officer conduct and rights to others. So with that, I just want to give the chief the chance to elaborate if he, if he wishes and, um, uh, join me in this conversation.
Well, thank you, Councilman Contreras. I, uh, appreciate the opportunity to speak on this because this is something that obviously is on the, on the forefront of everybody's mind and, uh, to say that I haven't lost sleep over this since it's happened and, um, been thinking about ways that we can make our relationships stronger in the community that we serve, um, is definitely always on my mind every single day. Uh, are we perfect? No. Are we striving to be perfect? Absolutely we are. And we have taken steps, um, to look back and evaluate ourselves, uh, when this came to light. And just to give the community and council some, uh, insight to what we're doing at the police department is we're looking at, um, where this all starts and it all starts on the front end with hiring, you know, we are required and we're audited by the state. Uh, when we do our background checks for police officers, every year they come in and audit every officer that we've hired to make sure that we did a, a complete and thorough background. But I'm starting to wonder if doing a complete and thorough background just on the officer is enough. I mean, do we need to start looking into not just the officer, but, uh, the officer's family, the upbringing, what really, uh, kind of environment where they brought up in and, and can that give us any indication of what an officer may, may be like five, ten years down the road? Um, when they get comfortable with, with their profession and what they're doing out there. Some of the other things are looking into, uh, supervision. You know, we have our sergeants that are out there in the field that, uh, respond to calls that they, they believe a supervisor should be going to, but but maybe we need to evaluate that and supervisors should be going to more calls to, to have more oversight of the officers and to see what they're doing and to make sure that they're doing the job right and they're doing the job and treating people with respect and dignity and being fair regardless of who that person is. Uh, looking at, at audits, right? Now we have audits in place for our body worn cameras that we started using March of two thousand eighteen. And those things have been invaluable. I can't tell you how many times we have had people coming in and accusing our officers, your officers, our employees of unimaginable allegations. And we watched the body worn camera and find out that the complaints that are being alleged against our officers are absolutely false because we have the evidence right there on camera to prove it. Um, our sergeants are required to audit those, not just when people come in, but to randomly look at uh, their officers' body worn cameras to do a random audit to make sure that they're treating people fairly and doing the job the right way. Comes into training. You know, um, we're very fortunate here in Westminster that we have our own training facility over there with our range, very large classroom and an inside, uh, mat room, kind of like a wrestling room where we have the opportunity to practice our rest and control techniques that we have the opportunity to go in there and on a big screen TV or, or on the, uh, projection watch different agencies throughout the United States that have done something wrong. And to Monday morning quarterback their actions and to pick it apart so we don't make those mistakes. And we even do it with our own calls for services. We debrief every large incident and we debrief everything that potentially could have gone wrong or did go wrong. Uh, and then it goes back to community input. You know, it's like I said earlier this year, you know, for our stakeholders, our businesses, our, uh, religious groups, our residents and those who, who frequent our city and shop, government exists for them and we are here for them. They, they are our customers. And anybody in business knows if you aren't returned business and, and in this day and age with social media, if you want a good Yelp rating or, or you want to be perceived to have a good product, then we need to produce a good product and we need to be out there listening to our community. Whether it's by forming community groups, which we have the chief's advisory committee that has kind of been put on hold because of COVID, but now that things are loosening up, I am bringing the chief's advisory committee back and it's going to be made up of members of our religious community, our business community, our residents, those people who come to our community and shop, they might not necessarily live here. But we value their opinion, we value their input because they are part of our community because they shop here. So moving forward, these are all the things that are, that are under review and our policies are under review and, and, you know, we are human, humans make mistakes. We get complacent because things are going really, really well and then something happens and we realize we need to do a better job of auditing ourselves and looking back and being humble enough to say, yeah, we messed up, we made a mistake, let's fix it. And how are we going to fix it? I don't have all those answers. My deputy chief, my officers don't have those answers. As a community, we have those answers and that's what this thing needs, is it needs a community to work together to solve these issues. And I just want to give everyone a snapshot of the last five years of what our department and what our city has been up against and what what achievements we've made in this area of community engagement. So over the last five years, the Westminster Police Department has responded to three hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-six calls for service.
Wow.
We have had forty-two citizen complaints and out of those forty-two citizen complaints in five years, two were based off of discrimination and because of the body worn cameras, those were absolutely false on the accusing person. The body worn camera proved that our officer didn't discriminate, didn't treat that person poorly and did not do the things that those officers were accused of. The other forty citizen complaints ranged anywhere from, I shouldn't have gotten the ticket, or the officer, you know, treated me poorly, which, you know, those are reviewed in the body worn cameras, but only two for treating somebody with either racially profiling or being discriminatory. And those were false. We have had thirty TASER deployments in five years, that's six a year. We have had four dog deployments, we've had zero officer involved shootings, zero deaths, zero uses of force with serious bodily injury. Looking at those numbers and anybody who likes to crunch numbers or play with stats, those are outstanding. The men and women of this police department do a great job in de-escalation, they do a great job in treating people fair, treating people with respect and providing quality service and service with integrity. And as a chief and as somebody who grew up in this city and who is in fifty-one years has not left this city, I cannot be more proud of the men and women that come to work every day, put their lives on the line for strangers, kissing their wife and kids goodbye, not knowing if today's going to be the day they don't come home. And they provide the best service in the best county and the best nation and the best state anywhere in the world. And I stand behind the men and women of this department and even though we have some of these stats that sound kind of high, we all know we can do a better job. And we're going to continue to strive to do a better job. We're always going to take accountability for what we've done. But I can guarantee you this, and the men and women of this department can guarantee the community, the council, our city manager and everybody who is affiliated with this city, that we will always treat people with courtesy, dignity, respect, and we will always strive to be the best we can be. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk about this. Sorry if I rambled on, I'm just very passionate right now about this and it's something that's hitting very close to my heart. Seems that I've been in this profession for twenty-six years and to see law enforcement painted with such a broad brush over something that happened, not in this city or, or in this state. It's troubling, but it's also eye opening because we do need to do a better job as police officers, as law enforcement and as community servers and community members. So again, I just thank you for the opportunity to talk about this. I'm sorry if I rambled on.
No, and, and I apologize for calling you so many times. I know you and I were back and forth and I, I was, uh, not taking no for an answer and you were, neither were you and, and you're always making your way to do your best to answer all my questions. So I, I appreciate the time and effort you put into the work that you do and as a local resident in Westminster, homegrown from graduate from Westminster High School, I'm sure you understand our community pretty well and can understand where the concern comes from and, and are patient with us. So, one again, I appreciate you for that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Um, and, and in closing, Mayor, I just ask that, uh, we, um, adjourn our council meeting in memory of Gabriel Amesqua.
All right.
Gabriel Amesqua, uh, passed away recently. He had taken over the, the program director of the pride program um, for the past two years.
All right.
Abazar passed away recently and I know they're having services for him, um, um, this coming week, but I just want to, uh, take a moment to, to recognize him for a service to our local youth in our community. I know he's, he always did his best to take care of everyone and be respectful of everyone and be there for everyone and um, just a shining example of what people can do with our local youth when they, when they love them and appreciate them and hold them higher than they hold themselves. So I just want to acknowledge him and hope that again, you adjourn today's meeting in, in remembrance of, of Mister Gabriel Amesqua.
All right, I will, I will do that. Okay, so, uh, councilmember Nguyen, but before, in light of me, uh, speak, I like to thanks our chief of police uh, for his response, his dedication and his leadership. I really appreciate, uh, for the last, uh, few days that I, I know that he worked really hard and all the police officer in, in our department, they work really hard and, um, uh, they give us, I think, um, all the update, like hour, like hour, uh, our update and I really appreciate that, that mean that they really care for the community. Uh, I really want to thanks for dedication and leadership of our chief of police. So next.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I have a question for you.
Yes.
If I have a resolution and, I mean, proclamation request, how do I submit that? It's in regards to, uh, uh, solidarity in Westminster in regards to, uh, George Floyd.
I think that you, you, you tend me to ask, uh, the city clerk, I think she will help you out with that, yeah.
Okay, I, great, I have a resolution. Do, do I, should I read it or read it next week or how do you, how does it work?
Uh, city attorney?
It's a proclamation.
Yes, so, uh, can he read that? Uh, city attorney? Can it?
I'm going to ask the, the city clerk to expound, because I think there's a difference here between resolution, you mentioned resolution versus proclamation.
I'm sorry, it's a proclamation, sir. Sorry about that.
So for, for the proclamation, all you need to do is just let the mayor know, you can read it now. Um, it's just something that the mayor just signs off on anyway, doesn't require council approval, so you're okay to read it. If it was a resolution, then you'd have to add it on.
Uh, because I don't know, I don't know the content of the proclamation unless that is a really, really urgent that council member Contreras, he wants to read or, you know, he wants to read for the next meeting, I don't know, but, but I mean, like, usually it would be, would be helpful if I know in advance.
I, I apologize, I, I didn't realize that I had, uh, turn it in here, but I could definitely, uh, I'd turn it in and, and respect, but it just in regard to solidarity and, and us sticking together, especially during this challenging time, so just want to, I, I wasn't clear on the process.
Okay.
So I'll just send it over to city clerk and then have it the council review and then I could, uh, send it out.
Okay, yeah, sure.
All right.
Yeah. Anything else?
So, thanks, sir.
Okay, so. Okay, so, Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nguyen, are you still there? City clerk? Are you still online?
Somebody in, I was unmute. Uh, I'm just unmuted. Well, first of all, thank, uh, thank, uh, Mayor, uh, and what I have to say is with the COVID nineteen pandemic is still going on and what had happened over the last few weeks. I know that our city, our, there are many things, like, I, there are many groups that I want to thank, uh, to appreciate, uh, for their effort. Uh, first, I want to thank to those who came out and voiced their opinions, uh, you know, with a peaceful demonstration for the last, for the two or three peaceful demonstration in the city of Westminster. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, them for voicing their opinions in a, in a peaceful manner. Uh, also, I would like to thanks, uh, our police chief and, um, you know, for the very detailed report. Thank you to, uh, all the W P D officers, uh, you know, you how they have done a good job of coordinating and supporting, uh, the people out there. And, uh, you know, since, since it just happened, you know, when they have protests in, uh, in, um, Los Angeles, I know that I contacted, uh, our police chief and, and talked about it. And I know that he already, you know, um, alert and prepare for what, what might happen to the city of Westminster. And I appreciate that he took the effort to coordinate the agencies, you know, many different agencies, uh, around us so that they can support us when the time comes. So I, I appreciate the police chief for, for your effort doing that. And, you know, because the COVID nineteen, I know that, um, our staff, our interim city manager, our staff have been working really hard on different issues, including the reopening, you know, uh, you know, create safe environment for reopening, uh, you know, city activities. So I know that they have put in a lot of effort for that and I, I'd like to appreciate, uh, every one of you for working hard, um, during this difficult times. So that's all I have for today, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Nguyen, uh, and, uh, my report, I have a really good news for our city. At the last O C F A board meeting, uh, we approve uh, o- option C, that mean reboot, uh, removing of a snowball uh, pension paid out payment from the contract city like us. I want to thanks Vice Mayor Ho for, uh, writing a letter on behalf of my, our city because I'm a board member on O C F A. So Vice Mayor Ho, she had to write a letter to ask O C F A more of directors to vote on option C. So I write to, uh, so based on this option, uh, our city, we going to save, uh, more than fourteen thousand in the fiscal year twenty and twenty-one. But for the fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, we going to save more than three hundred fifty thousand. I really want to thanks our interim city manager for, uh, uh, explaining to me all the number that our city we going to save. And I think this is a really good news for us because for the next two years, we going to save a lot of money in a room, uh, city manager. Uh, you have any, anything else explaining, uh, this option?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, and thank you for supporting that, uh, option C. Um, it, it really is helpful, I know you had to give a tough fight because some of those structural cities, you know, do not agree with us and it's really helpful, um, for the contract cities to save this money and it means a lot. And it, it does help, that's a lot of money for our city and I appreciate what you've done on that, thank you.
Yeah, I think I really appreciate that, uh, city manager, so I think that this option will help us for the next fiscal year, that's all I, I want to say. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting in honoring of Mr. Gabriel Masqua, who been really dedicated to help our Westminster community. And our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, June twenty-four, uh, seven P M, meeting adjourned, thank you.